Welcome to today's virtual planning committee. First, on behalf of the city council, my apologies for the delayed start of today's proceedings due to technical issues experienced. And start the formal proceedings. I'll just quickly check with our. Okay, so council conception, you can hear us okay? Thanks, Trish. Thank you, that's great. Helen, can you hear us okay?
Yes, thank you.
That's brilliant. Council Dave Cummings, can you hear us okay? Dave, can you hear us okay? Okay, Council Lavelle, can you hear us okay?
Okay, I'm back now, that's fine.
Okay, thanks Dave. Can hear you nice and clear. Council Hanson, good morning, can you hear us?
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks, Joe. Council, Council Dean, can you hear us?
Yeah, everything's fine.
Brilliant. Council Matt, can you hear us okay?
Fine, Michael.
Brilliant, thanks Billy. Mayor, can you hear us okay?
Loud and clear, thank you.
That's smashing. And lastly, Council Radford, can you hear us okay still?
Yeah.
Thanks Steve, that's brilliant. Can I just ask members to mute your microphones now, please? That'd be absolutely great. Thank you Steve, we can hear you nice and clear. In terms of business today, I can confirm at this point that agenda item seven, which related to the vacant land plot A zero six William Jessop Way in Princess Dock, has been withdrawn from consideration today. So this will come forward at a later date in due course, which will clearly be published on the city council's website. In terms of apologies for absence, I haven't received any for this morning's meeting. So without further ado, do any members of the committee present today wish to declare any interests on the items of business? If so, unmute your microphone, please state clearly what your interest is.
As an object, as someone who passed comments on the Edinburgh Park proposal, I'd like to comment on it as a local council, not as a planning member.
That's fine, speak obviously. Just to confirm, obviously you're not able to vote then on that application, Steve.
No, indeed.
That's excellent. Any other?
And I, I have an interest in number six. The former bridge in public house.
Okay, thank you Helen. Mayor?
Yes, I'd like to declare an interest in item four and five. I'll be speaking on the item, not as a committee member, but as a ward councillor.
Okay, that's excellent. Thank you Mayor, that's absolutely perfect. Any other interest at all from members? Otherwise, Mayor, if you could just lower your hand, please, on screen. I'll move straight on to the one minutes of our last meeting, which as you recall were held on the 11th of August. On pages four to 11 of your agenda, set these out. Are members agreeable to those? If you could just indicate and raise your hands collectively as to your assent. Thank you, that's excellent. I've got no urgent items of business to report, so with that in mind, I will move us on to our first items of business. And just to confirm that items four and five both relate to the Allerton Manor Golf Club, therefore we'll be taking the items considered together, even though we will be voting separately on the individual planning permissions. So with that in mind, we'll consider Allerton Manor Golf Course and on Allerton Road, Liverpool eighteen in Allerton Hunch Cross Ward. And if I can welcome our chair to proceedings and ask our chair to start us formally.
Yes, thank you for that, Michael. And thanks for everybody who is tuning in today and for such excellent attendance from our members. But we, all of us collectively extend our commiserations to Tony and his wife Anne on their loss. So sorry, Tony, but so pleased to see you here today. And if we can go on to agenda items four and five, we had Mr Richard G here, who would like to address the committee. So it's over to you, Richard.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
On screen to support Mr G. That should come on shortly. That's coming on now, it's visible on screen, so please continue, Mr G.
Okay, I can't see. Right, it's, so yeah, sorry, I can't, I can't see my first slide.
You can move on, one slide please. Mr G, can you see that okay now?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I'm, I can't see my first slide. I'm not sure whether it's up on your screen. That's it, that's it. Okay, yeah, right, thanks. Before turning to the details of the scheme, I'd just like to say a few words to set out the background and the context and the rationale behind this application. Our Allerton Golf Course currently comprises an eighteen hole municipal golf course set in mature parkland that operates alongside a nine hole par three academy course. My client, the applicant, has operated the course under a long lease from the city council since 2014. The former clubhouse, now known as the old stables and the hayloft, has been extended and refurbished to a golf shop, chain facilities, a cafe and restaurant and a first floor function space. Only last week, that development, which you can see on the screen in front of you, was awarded a building excellence award for the best commercial project in the North West region. Works have also been completed on part of the adjacent grade two listed manor house, resurrecting the original Fletcher's Golf Bar in the first phase of works to that listed building. So the application before you represents the next stage of this very important and well-used community leisure asset. My client's looking to deliver further enhancements and the introduction of exciting high-quality new facilities. The ultimate intention being to transform the golf course estate into arguably the UK's finest municipal pay and play golf course, all to be delivered by the private sector, working in partnership with the city council as the landowner. So turn into the next slide.
Just to intervene briefly in proceedings, can I ask anyone who was actually participating at today's meeting to please turn off viewing the live stream from our website? If you were joined on this meeting, you'll be able to view slides through teams clearly. Otherwise, there's a time lag built in, which is a spec Mr G may be experiencing in what he's viewing.
Right, okay, yeah, I can see the second slide, okay. So this slide shows the entire golf course and the numbers you can hopefully make out refer to the various elements of the application. So just in brief terms, I'll talk about those in a little bit more detail, but in briefly, number one are the phase two works proposed to the listed manor house, which will be the refurbishments and repair works and its extension to create a thirty-one bedroom boutique hotel. Number two is a new partly subterranean clubhouse. Number three is an adventure golf course. Number four is a golf driving range. Number five is, well, it covers the whole course. It's a range of course works to create a much improved championship course. Number six is the selective removal of mainly poor quality and mainly self seeded trees and other vegetation and the introduction of a comprehensive new landscaping scheme across the course, which will result in a net increase of five hundred and seventy in excess of policy requirements. All is endorsed by your tree officer and your ecological advisers, me ask. Number seven is a slight diversion and improvements to the condition of the public right of way that dissects the course with new low-level lighting to encourage walkers and joggers to safely use the right of way during the evenings. Number eight is the relocation of the greenkeeper's yard and storage containers, which are currently located to the rear of the listed manor house to a new centrally located area. And number nine are adjustments and expansion of the car parking areas to accommodate the above new facilities. So the total number of parking spaces will increase from one hundred and twenty-six to three hundred and fifty. All is endorsed by your highways officer. So those are the principal elements of the proposal. Before describing them in more detail, we've noted that representation is received from some local residents and most of those suggest that the proposal is contrary to the green wedge and green space policies. As the report in front of you explains, that's simply not the case. Both of those policies allow development to take place, provided the criteria of the policies is satisfied. And in this case, there's no question that all of the criteria are satisfied and as such, the application is entirely consistent and compliant with your green wedge and green space policies. And we'd like to counter those negative comments by some members of the community by explaining the outcome of our own consultation exercise, the details of which was submitted with the application. We undertook this shortly before the application was submitted. We purposely reached out more widely than the city council because this is clearly a very important and much-loved sporting and leisure asset for the wider community. We hand-delivered information brochures to over a thousand local homes in the L eighteen and L twenty-five post-Code areas. We held face-to-face meetings with both the MP and local councillors and the feedback from all of those was possible. We held two day-long community consultation events at the golf club, which were well-attended. And aside from a small handful of negative comments, there was a great deal of support from the community. Indeed, based on over three hundred questionnaires that were completed and returned, over ninety percent of those expressed strong support for the proposal. So while we note the negative comments presented by part of the community, the reality is very different. The fact of the matter is then, this is backed up by evidence. There's an overwhelming and strong and silent majority support and positivity about this application from the wider community. And we'd ask you to please bear that in mind when you listen to the objectives that will follow. So turning to the next slide, this is the, sorry, I'll wait to see this slide. Okay. This is the, this is the cornerstone of the project. Our manor house, which you can see today on the bottom left of the slide. It's a grade two listed building. This burnt down in nineteen forty-four and it has since sat unused and in a seriously dilapidated and deteriorating state. Although my client has recently repaired and refurbished part of it to a very high standard, which is referred to as Fletcher's Bar. The condition of the remainder of the former manor house is very poor. It's at risk, it's in urgent need of investment, repair and appropriate reuse its features to be secured. That said, it's proposed to repair and extend the building to form a thirty-one room hotel with an associated spa and event and conference facilities. This will greatly assist in attracting and accommodating more prestigious golfing competitions and events, which is a key driver of this application. The proposed extension has intentionally been designed in contemporary style. As the report in front of you confirms, your heritage specialist states that this type of design approach is considerably favorable and that extensions to historic buildings, such as this, should not slavishly recreate the original or offer a prestige design. That would simply not work. Using the words of your heritage specialist, what is proposed by this application is an honest approach, using an architectural language and a design of its own time as a new layer of history and heritage, which protects and celebrates the remaining facade and juxtaposes the old and the new. The extension will sit behind the facade of the listed manor. There'll be no structural connection between the old and the new structures and there'll be no loadings on the old structure, which currently comprises two dilapidated facades that are not supported and are at risk. It's very important to note that the height, scale and massing of the new build extension is essentially the same as that of the former manor house before it burned down seventy-six years ago. As the report points out, paragraph three point nine, there'll always be differences in people's personal opinions on design matters and it calls for subjective judgment. However, ninety percent of those who responded to our own very wide consultation exercise and your own planning, design and conservation officers consider that this is the correct design approach and are supportive. Our view is that what's proposed represents architecture and materials of the highest quality. It will deliver an exceptional and unique development that will save this decrepit listed building from ongoing dereliction. And we're grateful for your heritage and design officers for helping to shape this proposal into what is now before you. And the feedback received from our community at the consultation event suggests that most people consider this proposal to be outstanding. Next slide. Okay, this is a CGI image of the proposed new clubhouse pavilion building. It will be partly subterranean, as you will see when we come to the next slide, and it'll be softened by planting. This will provide a new fit-for-purpose clubhouse for golfers in the ideal to the fit, which is where it needs to be, and overlooking the new family adventure golf course. It will replace the existing clubhouse that is currently located in the former stables building. The existing golf shop is far too cramped to offer the range and quality of golf-related goods that any prestigious course ought to offer. And so too are the changing facilities cramped and at overcapacity. Crucially, the existing clubhouse does not allow security of the course. There's been increasing abuse of the course by people arriving and playing it for no charge, in turn disrupting the golfers who have paid the fees and await patiently they tend to play. As it stands, it's close to impossible to properly manage the facility. Put simply, the existing clubhouse is not only not fit for purpose, but it's in entirely the wrong place and it will become even more so when the proposed adventure golf facility is developed. The new clubhouse will be constructed over two levels, ground and lower ground. It will contain a golf shop, a reception area, a refreshment zone cafe, a viewing area. It will contain state-of-the-art specialist indoor golfing tuition rooms, video analysis and simulator technology, the like of which does not currently exist anywhere in Liverpool. Crucially, the new clubhouse will be located precisely where it needs to be, close to and visible from the main course entrance, adjacent to the practice putting green and overlooking the first tee and the proposed adventure golf course, which I'll describe shortly. It's essential that if parents are to allow their children to play on the adventure golf course, it must be overlooked for obvious safeguarding reasons. The new clubhouse will be designed with regard to green wedge policy to be as low impact as feasible by locating all of the changing facilities and the golf tuition and training rooms below ground level. When viewed from the front, which is the image you see on screen, the building will appear as a simple, single-storey flat roof structure with a cedum roof. It was constructed in the same brick as the recently completed development at the Carmelite monastery next door, broken up by simple glass panels and softened by planting. Next slide please. Okay. The application is also promoting an eighteen-hole adventure golf course adjacent to and overlooked by the new clubhouse. The overlooking from the rear viewing terrace of the new clubhouse can be seen on this slide. The adventure golf course is an important facility for any modern enterprise and golf complex, and particularly those which have suffered from poor management, lack of investment and historically poor trading, as in this case. Not only do well-designed adventure golf courses appeal to families, thereby widening the attraction of the course to an extended range of visitors, but these are excellent for an informal introduction into the sport of golf for young people. Aside from that, they're a popular recreation facility and it's worth highlighting that there is only one small, nine holes, not eight holes, existing adventure golf course in the whole of Liverpool. This facility at Allerton is an important part of this proposal, which aims to create the very best municipal golfing facility for all the abilities in the North West region. And it's also important to highlight that in common with every other facility proposed by this application, the adventure golf course and the new clubhouse facilities have been designed to be fully accessible to disabled people, including those dependent on wheelchairs. Next slide please. Okay, the application also promotes a twenty-four bay driving range with an associated canopy, so it can be used during rainy weather. Safety netting and low-level lighting, which was set into the ground as opposed to tall floodlights, to enable its use during hours of darkness in early evenings. Like the new clubhouse, it will be a simple, low structure built in traditional rustic quality materials. It will be barely visible from the wider public realm, largely surrounded by belts of mature trees and other vegetation. Again, this facility is an essential component of this next tranche of works, providing high-quality complement to golfing offer to the existing course, which is a prerequisite for all modern championship standard golf courses. Next slide please. Okay. So this works to the golf course itself. The course was designed and laid out in a very different age. It's now tired, it's a poor quality design and layout. It's not at all challenging or exciting in the modern age of golf, given the huge advancement in ball and club technology. It's an interesting fact that an average golfer today can actually hit the ball further than the best professionals could only twenty to thirty years ago. This course suffers from serious health and safety issues, such as greens that cannot be seen from the tees and numerous blind shots and severe drainage issues, which rendered part of the course unplayable through the wet weather months. It's far cry from the top quality challenging championship course that my client and Liverpool City Council aspire to. The course works have been designed by IDG, the International Design Group, who are renowned golf course architects affiliated to the Professional Golfers Association. They've designed innumerable first-class golf courses around the world, including golfing hubs in Dubai, the United States and Asia. Allerton Manor will be the first municipal golf course in the whole of the UK to undergo this kind of high-level refurbishment, reconfiguration and investment that's proposed by this application. The course remodeling works will be phased over a period of approximately four to five years, so that eighteen holes of golf will be kept open and in play at all times. And this will be subject to a detailed phasing program. And in that regard, can I just draw your attention to the requirements of conditions fourteen and twenty-two? The course works are intended to enhance the quality, attractiveness, playability and safety of the course. They will involve reconfiguration, remodeling to create an extended and considerably better quality eighteen-hole course with much improved drainage, selective tree removal and replacement and other complimentary planting. In terms of trees, the report before you confirms that four hundred and two trees will be removed. But it's very important that you note that the overwhelming majority of those are poor quality, young, self-seeded and in many cases inappropriate and non-native species specimens which detract from the setting and in some cases are suffocating trees of far better quality. You'll also note that it's proposed to plant nine hundred and nine new trees, which exceeds your normal two-for-one replacement policy. Those trees have been selected to not only maximize their breeding potential and contribution, but also to create new and better wildlife habitats. And the report in front of you confirms that your tree officer described the replacement planting scheme as high quality. And he considers that the net gain of five hundred and seven trees will more than compensate for the tree losses. Turning to the final slide please. Okay, so something up. I'd just like to highlight, reiterate the impressive benefits that this project's going to deliver. It will deliver very significant improvements to the playability, attractiveness and accessibility for all users, including disabled people whose needs have been factored into everything we are presenting and health and safety of the golf course. It will introduce fit-for-purpose, exciting, state-of-the-art golf-related activities above and beyond anything else that's available in Liverpool. It will transform the club and course into arguably the best municipal pay-and-play golfing facility in the whole of the UK. It will introduce the only eighteen-hole and best adventure golf course in the whole of Merseyside, which will appeal to young people and families alike and which has been designed to be fully usable to disabled customers. Research shows that quality adventure golf courses such as this are fundamental for attracting young people into the world of golf. It will create an impressive and unique boutique hotel and spa with associated facilities for golfers and others by sensitively restoring and extending a decrepit, deteriorating, at-risk listed building. The applicant is committing fifteen million pounds of private sector investment to deliver this project. One hundred and fifty new jobs will be created. Ten apprenticeships will be created. The applicant is also committed to working closely with local colleges and higher education institutions to provide local school leavers with jobs, training and career opportunities. As well as permanent jobs, the project will sustain at least a hundred and fifty construction-related jobs. There will be a net increase of five hundred and seventy in excess of your policy requirements and those trees will be far superior quality to those that are replaced. And finally, the application complies in full and absolute terms to your green wedge and green space policies and indeed all of your other policies. The report says, they sound very clearly. That's all I've got to say and I hope it was helpful. Thank you.
Richard, about that presentation.
Can I just ask if there's any drainage issues with the tree planting of species to assist the drainage?
Would you answer that question to Council Radford, please?
So is that a question for me?
Yes, I was just saying, with the tree planting and I didn't know if you had any drainage issues, will the tree species be designed to maybe assist with actually drainage? Because you can get species which deliberately are high-water seepage, high-usage species. I just didn't know if there's any drainage issues on the side and that would be an extra benefit.
I don't think I can answer your question specifically about the trees and their contribution or otherwise to the drainage strategy. But what I will say is that there's been a hell of a lot of detailed drainage work submitted with the application, which has been vetted by your drainage team, the LFA, and endorsed under associated conditions.
Well, if I can just share that as a friendly comment, you might find that useful, that if you are having some drainage issues, if you take advice from your garden people, they will probably give you a guide on which species are particularly good at soaking up water seepage. So just to take it more as a help.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Can't see anybody. Oh, hang on, no, I can't see who's indicating there. Michael, can you help me out with this? There is a.
Yeah, yeah, Chair, we have Council Cummings has indicated to ask a question. Council Cummings, if you want to unmute and comment now, if you could.
All right, thank you, Mike. I'm very, I'm very impressed, Richard. I just want to say I'm very impressed with your presentation. I just want to, I just want to clarify again the concept of municipal and municipal and private enterprise working together. Of course, of course, the hotel, spa and boutique would be a private initiative and people have to pay for access to that. Apart from that, with all the other, all the other facilities, they are open access facilities. I've got that right?
Sorry, yeah, just unmuting my mic. Absolutely, yes, direct.
Right, I'm very happy with that, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that's very clear. Everything's open access here. So I can't see any other little hands going up. So I'm going to hand over now to Stephen Hopely, who's an agent who's going to address the against the development. Over to you, Stephen.
Thank you, Chair. At this stage, Mr. At this stage, Mr. Hopely doesn't appear to have been able to join us. I've sought to make contact with him on the telephone number and two email addresses provided by him at this stage, and I'll wait to get an answer. So, I would suggest, if you agree, but councillor Juarez has indicated that she wishes to comment on the application, so I'd suggest you move on pending our attempt to make proper contact with Mr. Hopely.
Well, so Juarez, will you come in now, please?
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, members of the planning committee. I want to thank the agent for his presentation. Also, as ward councillor, I want to speak upon the application. Now, I've been quite impressed, really, with the level of consultation taken by the developers and how he engaged, how they engaged with the local community here in Allerton, Huntscross, and Walton. And I think the overall feedback was fair. So, I want to give some credit there on the way that they consulted very early in the stage, even... ...for some... ...in capitalizing on the practice for the future. Maybe other developers might want to take an example of that. With regards to the work already done at Allerton Manor Golf Club, a lot of investment has gone in already, which has been positive. You know, the golf course was under threat. Eight-year local authority couldn't afford to maintain it anymore. So, you know, at the moment, we have some great facilities at Allerton Golf Course, but I think that this level of investment that's going to be invested in Allerton Golf Club is very much needed, and it's very much welcomed by me. I think it's going to... ...to improve the health and wellbeing of local residents and visitors, and it will give them a choice to be able to play a sport that will contribute to their wellbeing. Also, you know, the, the listed facade that's there now, that if it, if there was no, for example, the developer has already, you know, there's a bar at the moment, Fletcher's Barn, and had that not investment happened, I really do believe that that facade would have to be, it would be crumbling. And I'm sure that in most of our lifetimes, or we've ever seen of that facade, it's just year after year, just crumbling to bits and pieces, and we just kind of try and imagine of what the past, the Georgian period must have been like. But now, you can actually visit it, visit Fletcher's Barn, have a cup of coffee, and, you know, take pleasure in the surroundings. I have no problem with the 31-bedroom hotel. I think this would be a great asset to South Liverpool. I think it will give, it will give visitors a choice of whether they want to stay in a city centre location or a suburbia kind of location. And I think this is going to play very, very well with families who might not want to stay in a city centre, in a city centre location. I think the spa, again, you know, it will give people a very, a very, it will give people a choice of take, take up treatments and to look after themselves, and give them relaxation opportunities. And also, I think that, you know, it overall, you know, it, it will not, by looking at the application, it doesn't interfere with the UDP policies in regards to policy EO11, as it will not cause any harm to the green space, as what the green space was intended will still remain. But what I do have concerns about is the level of car parking. To me, it seems quite excessive, and I think that it's, there's just far too, too much, far too many spaces. Also, I'm, I'm quite, there seem to be some, some concerns regarding with the bridleway when the application first came out. I'm quite happy that the developer has sought to iron out problems with residents. For example, you know, instead of having closing the bridleway temporary as the phases of the development take place, he has now removed that application, which I think that's, that's a very good thing to do, as it would have had, it would have had an impact on walkers using the bridleway on a daily basis. So, that, that's very much welcome. Also, I do, I welcome the fact that, you know, the, the road on Manlave Avenue, the path leading up, that's been resurfaced, and that if any damages is caused to any roads or any path, that will be made good. And yeah, also, I'm happy that the, the applicant has also listened to our heritage specialist in the types of material that they were going to originally use. She suggested that the, that the materials... ...be, are not going to be kind of suitable for the facade at present. So, the developer went away and have come back with better materials, sandstones and metal, which I think will, will, it's not going to pretend, you know, I don't think you can take the facade and build a whole building and to replicate, replicate of what the original house looked like before. That would be a fake, and it would be too obvious. I think you, you have, what the developer's trying to do is, is trying to complement the old with the new, and it's going to cause, it's going to cause a combination of opinions, I think. But, you know, it's, I think it's probably the, the materials that they're using is probably the best materials that you can work with in this modern era. So, you know, just to round up, I do, I do welcome the investment. I think it will be good for our area. I don't believe, I, I don't believe it's going to damage or harm, or cause any harm with regards to policy EO11 of the UDP. And I'm going to conclude with that, Chair.
Councillor Juarez, has anybody got any points, Councillor Juarez?
Yes, if I may.
Yes, I can't see who's coming in, but who, I haven't got a yellow hand. Steve, Steve, would you like to come in? I can't hear you.
Really?
I cannot hear you.
If you're ready to say, to Councillor Juarez, it seems a bit strange to be welcoming all the investments, the new applications, the new user groups, but then complain they want somewhere to park to get there. But I presume that what she really saying is, the overall balance is that we should support the application. I would presume the business plan will have actually calculated how many car spaces they need to support the user groups, to support the investment.
Thank you for that, councillor Radford. I could hear you clearly at the end, but not at the start. And also, I note, and members will be aware of this, that this was extensively discussed in the agenda notes, and a lot of adjustments were made to the car parking so that it was visually less intrusive. And yes, councillor Radford, I'm sure there has been a calculation done as part of the business plan. Are there any other points now before we hand over to our planning officer?
Chair, just to confirm, Mr. Hopely has been in contact with me, has confirmed he's not available to speak to today's committee, so is happy for us to proceed.
Yes, and we do have in our agenda notes details of all the consultations and all the objections that have been made, so we are aware of them. Can we hand over now to our planning officer, please?
Thank you, Chair. Stuart Clark here, team leader of the south team. Can everybody see and hear me?
I can't see, Stuart.
Okay, thank you, Chair. You've had a very detailed presentation by the applicant, and you've got a very detailed report that details all of the issues that are relevant to this scheme. So, I don't intend to regurgitate what you've already heard. Very quickly, this is a significant application that seeks to introduce a range of golfing activities and structures in the green wedge, which will promote the long-term viability of the golf course. And such things are encouraged under the policy in securing the long-term openness of the green wedge by securing open recreational. So, in that respect, your officers are very happy that this implies with the requirements of policy EO3 and EO11. As you've seen from the presentation, there's a range of structures that are going to be introduced, all of high quality. All have been subject to detailed consultation with design officers, heritage officers, tree officers, and highways officers, who are all satisfied that this is going to deliver a high-quality scheme that will be available to both private sector in terms of people paying to use the hotel, and also the general public in using things like the adventure golf, the golf course, the driving range. I think the one thing that the agent didn't put down, and I think it is worth mentioning because it was part of the... ...the negotiation. Spa that will be in the hotel is going to be the first fully disabled spa, fully disabled accessible spa in the city. And I think by pointing that out to demonstrate that the applicant has engaged with the council in matters of accessibility in this particular case. And as I've said, there's not much more I can add from the very detailed presentation that you've heard. And in terms of the parking, all the matters relating to highways and the parking requirements were carefully considered by the head of highways and transportation, and he's concurred with the level that is being proposed is appropriate for a facility of the size that you're considering today. So, I'm happy to answer any questions, Chair. But we're happy to recommend the application for approval.
Are there any questions for our planning officer? Well, there don't seem to be. So, I'm going to try and get up again what I just had up, which was the... Can I move that the recommendation in respect to application number 19F be approved, subject to a legal agreement and conditions, and that recommendation in respect of application number 19L be approved, subject to conditions as proposed? Are those motions both agreed?
Thank you, Chair. I'll conduct a vote on each of those individual recommendations in turn for purposes of clarity. Before I do so, do any members wish to move an amendment before we formally deal with the votes? No? In which case, the first one for application number 19F1818 was application number four on your original agenda, which dealt with the actual works to the Manor Golf Club and course. So, that was the full planning application. So, with that in mind, I will move to the vote on the chair's resolution. So firstly, your vote, please, Chair.
Agreed. Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Concepcion, your vote, please.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Cummings?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Hanson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Kennedy?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Marat?
Agreed.
Thank you. And lastly, councillor, sorry, apologies, councillor Lavelle?
Agreed.
Thank you. And councillor Radford?
Agreed.
Thank you. Noting that councillor Juarez has spoken on this application, therefore is not voting. The effect in terms of the voting members today is nine members voting in favour, none against, no abstentions, and that is the first of the two applications approved. Moving to our second recommendation on this site, same process. So again, your vote, please, Chair. Thank you. Councillor Concepcion?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Cummings?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Hanson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Kennedy?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Lavelle?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Marat?
Agreed.
Thank you. And councillor Radford?
Agreed.
Thank you. Again, that is unanimous in terms of voting members, nine in favour, no members against or abstaining. With that in mind, both of those applications are approved on that basis. And as members were maybe aware, we have a number of speakers for item 10 on the Order of Business today. So, I would suggest at this stage we bear the Order of Business to take attention to item 10, which for purposes of clarity relates to premises at Whitland Road, Liverpool Six, in Kensington and Fairfield Ward. Chair, are you happy for us to proceed on that basis? Thank you. Councillor Kennedy?
Can I just ask a question? I, my son lives in the property, but I own a property in Whitland Road, so do I have to declare an interest?
Just to confirm, councillor Kennedy, do you own a property actually on the road itself?
On Whitland Road, yes.
I would, I would suggest for purposes of clarity that you impact on the value of that property by any proposals.
Okay, I declare an interest and withdraw from discussion on this item.
Thank you, Malcolm. If we can save this item.
Can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Yeah. So, on this, we have an architect agent present and deliver a presentation in support of the application and respond to any questions, and then we'll have further speakers in objection. So, I'd like to call first of all, I can't remember his name now.
Mr. De Haidt, I believe, Chair.
That's it, yes. You'd like to speak now, please?
Team Cameron, can I get a minute?
I can hear you.
Right, hello? Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you, we can hear you.
Right, thank you, thank you, Chair. Our application scheme proposes address all the relevant criteria stated in safe policy H7 of the city council's UDP policy for the conversion of properties into flats, bed seats, bed and breakfast, and hostel accommodation. More specifically, safe policy H7 criteria one refers to the suitability of the premises. The property is a large two-story and terrace house that has previously been rendered out as bed seats. It is situated in an established residential area in the Kensington district, which is less than two miles away from the centre of Liverpool, and with good transport links to the city centre and the universities.